Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the Tempe City Council Work-Study Session. Item number one is Call to Order. Council meetings can be watched in real time via Cox Cable Channel 11 and at tempe.gov/tempe11. Members of the public may also attend the meeting virtually through Microsoft Teams. Guidelines for conduct at city council meetings are on the table near the entrance for those in attendance at tonight's meeting. We will now play a video with the proper protocol for ensuring the appropriate conduct at city council meetings.
...of Tempe welcomes public comment at this time. Disruptive behavior will not be allowed. Continued disruptive behavior will lead to removal from the council chambers. We need to be able to hear everyone in the room. Behavior that disrupts, disturbs, or otherwise impedes the orderly conduct of any city council meeting is not helpful and is not permitted. This includes behavior both inside and outside of the council chambers. Should individuals inside the council chambers become disruptive so that city business is not able to be conducted, the mayor will first ask that the individuals allow city business to be completed. There will be time for public comment during the call to the audience portion of the meeting. If no cooperation, the mayor will issue a verbal warning and let them know that the continued disruptive behavior will lead to removal from the council chambers. If there is still no cooperation, the mayor will issue a second verbal warning and let them know that the continued disruptive behavior will lead to removal from the council chambers. If there is no cooperation after asking and two verbal warnings, then the mayor will ask security officers to remove only those individuals who are causing the disruption. Security personnel should not engage in any way but only escort them from the council chambers. If individuals refuse to leave, security personnel shall warn them that they are trespassing and that the next step will be arrest by a Tempe police officer. Tempe officers may have to arrest if individuals refuse to leave. Charges for trespass and disorderly conduct may apply as well as other charges. Should anyone be asked to be removed, the mayor will recess the meeting.
Sounds good. We're going to move on to item number two here, Call to the Audience. The city council welcomes public comment at this time for the Issue Review Session and Committee of the Whole Items on this Work-Study Session agenda. There is a three-minute time limit per speaker. What I want to do here, since there are a number of cards and we've got somewhat of a lengthy agenda, I think, I'd like to try to make sure we take the public comment now. Just if you want to stay with us for the whole meeting, you're more than welcome to, but just to be respectful of our residents' time, who are coming in to speak this evening. So I'm going to take all the cards I have here, once again, in the order in which they were received. That means this evening I will be starting with Darlene Justice. Please come forward, state your name and place of residence. You have three minutes.
Hello, my name is Darlene Justice. I live in Tempe. My husband, Bill, and I have lived and raised our family in North Tempe since 1965. We've seen many changes in Tempe and North Tempe. Thankfully, we live near the Sonoran Desert Preserve, our thriving neighborhoods on both sides of Scottsdale Road with the most diverse housing in Tempe. By our North Tempe Community Center, Preserve Sandra Day O'Connor and Isandrath Homes, Arizona Heritage Center, and many wonderful parks. I have lobbied for homeless folks and housing firsts over the years and have taken many of you, including several Tempe police, to tour Housing First in Phoenix. I believe that the homeless folks who will never be able to stay off streets without actual housing firsts in support of care, there are those. I do applaud Tempe leaders for your emphasis and action on transitional housing, CARE-7 and HOPE, and Park Rangers. Sadly, many North Tempe citizens' lives are now changing. Many have real concerns for safety in our neighborhoods, avoiding Scottsdale Road businesses and even pumping gas. Recently, at our Goodwill store, a transient supposedly banned from Goodwill kept harassing cashiers and intimidating customers. Finally, upon leaving the store, he had a good laugh with three transients on bicycles waiting outside. Their game is neither funny nor harmless. It generates unsafe and threatened feelings to customers. At our new Circle K where transients regularly assemble, recently I saw a transient on a bike, and he had a machete and a scabbard under his jacket and extending below it. I find out that that's legal in Arizona unless the person's a felon, I wonder. The outdoor and indoor setting has been closed to customers at our Starbucks on Scottsdale Road because of homeless and transient issues and threats to employees and customers. Citizens are very upset about this. Transients also gather at the bus stop in front of Starbucks. Are we going to lose that bus stop also, the bus bench, like we have in front of Quick Trip and down the street on Scottsdale Road? Stripping wires from lighting along Canal Pass and the Isandrath House and Heritage Park parking lot, cutting brass sculptures and plumbing structures, breaking down fencing on Gilbert Road, cutting locks and turning water on full floors flooding our park from the canal. These are destructive and very expensive occurrences. Folks with good intentions who feed homeless and transients in our parks only help keeping them in the region.
Good. Ten seconds.
At least until the next session, next time. Please, we have to be careful of the bad behavior and not comply with some no civility. Tempe, are we going to accept lawlessness or defend lawfulness? Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker I have is Kim Gaffney Loza. Please come forward, state your name and place of residence. You have three minutes.
Kim Gaffney Loza, North Tempe. Good afternoon, mayor and council. Please know when I'm speaking today, it is without malice towards individuals that are dealing with a host of complicated issues. North Tempe has had food and clothing drives. My neighbors are only happy to contribute to organizations with programs that assist these populations. My husband and I have happily contributed to several organizations that connect services to provide unsheltered with what they need. What I want to bring up today is what I have seen in the parks and preserves in North Tempe. As the commissioner on the Desert Conservation Commission, I am speaking for myself and not the commission. But I can say that from the very inception of the commission, camping in the preserves has been a concern. These camps are detrimental to the ecology because of fires that burn vegetation, soil that has been compacted around large encampments, branches broken off trees, and invasive stink nets spread in areas which are not used by recreational hikers and bicyclists. Then there is a huge amount of trash left behind: clothing, blankets, sleeping bags, rugs, cardboard, personal care items, food containers, my most hated Polar Pop cups, straws, tinfoil needles, Q-tips, toilet paper, human excrement, bike parts, and many other items like stickers and even a fire extinguisher at one point. Not only do my husband and I do daily pickups and participate in larger pickups with Keep Tempe Beautiful, we see others out on hikes doing the same. Park workers are also burdened with cleanups. Our fairly recently renovated Ramadas in North Moore Park and Turf Papago Park are often occupied by the unsheltered and transient populations. These were historically reserved by families and other groups for their celebrations. I have not seen much of these groups in these Ramadas recently because of the perception that they are not desirable for safety and sanitary concerns. Mass feedings in the parks in North Tempe only enable these populations to stay in the area and add to the trash impact in the bordering desert. I've watched the migration of people on their way to feedings in Moore Park on bikes and walking along Curry Road. Structured programs that combine food services with other services to get people back on their feet in a more appropriate setting would be less damaging to our environment. Housing firsts such as what is available at 209 West Jackson seems to be the best solution for the chronically homeless, surrounding them with services, security, personal space, and allowing them to be responsible pet owners. Most evenings nearing sunset, there is a migration of the unsheltered transient population down McKellup's, North College, North Scottsdale Road, and Curry Road. Let me just say that the HOPE team and police have always been responsive when I have called in camping or fires in the preserve, and I am thrilled to now have...
Ten more seconds.
I'm thrilled to now have Park Rangers to assist the HOPE team in trying to encourage these populations to accept safer and healthier living situations. Thank you.
Thank you so much. The next speaker I have is Lori Foster. Please come forward, state your name and place of residence. You have three minutes.
Hi. Good afternoon. Lori Foster, Tempe, Arizona. I'm the interim president and CEO of Downtown Tempe Authority, and I wanted to come today and share some, actually, some notes of things I've been taking notes in conversations I've had with downtown business community and other stakeholders downtown. Just yesterday, I had a long conversation with a longstanding downtown Tempe merchant, and we were talking about how proud we are to be in a town and have a business in a city that does not stand for people sleeping on the sidewalk, that they do everything in their power to try to help people and get the assistance they need. And those comments mirror a lot of the comments that I've heard with other downtown merchants and stakeholders. Every day, we see the results of the CARE and HOPE team, the phone line, the online encampment reporting, and the extended hours of the HOPE team. We've seen the benefit of this proactive outreach and engagement downtown. It means a quicker response, providing more help and connections for those people that need the help. This means less disruption to the daily operations of downtown businesses and a clean, safe, and welcoming environment for residents, visitors, and employees. We provide the downtown merchants with information and a poster of who to call when so that they too can be a part of the solution, providing people in need with a connection to assistance, whether it's HOPE team, CARE-7, Safety Patrol, community responders, or Tempe PD. As you are aware, we also operate a Safety Patrol guide in the downtown district, and they welcome to enhance the experience for residents, visitors, and workers downtown. We work on the streets with an enhanced security presence on the streets and patrol on foot and bicycle seven days a week. Safety Patrol conducts daily point-in-time counts downtown as well as at the lake, and we share this data with the city to help address the needs of unsheltered individuals and help businesses and downtown visitors. We work closely with the community responders, Tempe PD, and EMS to help guide the city's outreach response, and we've even partnered with Tempe Works to provide jobs for unsheltered people in need. We know what is working here and what does not work. What doesn't work in the downtown district and the surrounding areas are large gatherings and feedings. We know they don't work just from seeing it, but we also know from the data, it leads in a large increase in disruption for the central business district for several days prior and after, and such things as trespassing, theft, herfighting, and the like. This homeless initiative undertaken by the city in the last several months is a collaboration that is working, demonstrated by the data presented and that we count every day and share with the city. We know the strategies and tactics are working, not only from data but from the comments we received from the downtown stakeholders, merchants, residents, and employees. We applaud the city's homeless solutions initiatives, and we are proud to be a willing partner in that effort. Perfect timing.
Wow, okay. That might be the first time I have ever seen that happen. Thank you, Lori. All right, my next card here is Bruce Nestor. Exactly, exactly. Who knew?
Bruce Nestor, Central Tempe. And I want by expressing my gratitude for your unwavering commitment to the growth and prosperity of Tempe. However, I stand before you today to address a matter that has been increasingly concerning for homeowners like myself: the unpermitted charitable feedings in our public parks specially organized by Arizona HUGS for the houseless. While I appreciate the intent behind these events, the repercussions on our neighborhoods cannot be ignored. Parks, the sanctuary of our communities, have become hosts to gatherings exceeding 200 individuals, all without necessary permits. This has led to a array of unintended consequences imposing a significant risk to the safety, cleanliness, and overall well-being of our neighborhoods. As a homeowner, I'd like to address some of these risks, our particular troubling safety concerns. The sheer size of these unpermitted gatherings raise concerns about crowd control, potential security issues for residents in the vicinity. Environmental impact: the results have resulted in liver biohazards, discarded needles jeopardizing the cleanliness and hygiene of our public spaces. Such environmental risks not only affect the aesthetics of our neighborhoods but also pose health hazard in residence. Neighborhood disruptions: the unpermitted events disrupt the tranquility of our neighborhoods, causing inconvenience to homeowners and conflicting with other permitted activities. I recognize Arizona HUGS' positive contributions in offering meals and resources to those in need, whereas it imperative that we strike a balance between compassion and the protection of our neighborhoods. I urge the city council and mayor to encourage compliance, encourage Arizona HUGS to comply with the special events permitting process, not only to ensure that legitimacy of their activities but also allows for proper planning to mitigate safety and environmental concerns, facilitate dialogue, initiate open dialogue between the city, Arizona HUGS, and concerned homeowners like myself. Collaborate discussions can lead to solutions and respect the organization's goal while addressing the risks posed to our neighborhoods. Explore supportive measures, explore avenues for supporting initiatives like Arizona HUGS without compromising the well-being of our neighborhoods. So in conclusion, let's work together to find a resolution that preserves the safety and tranquility of our neighborhoods while upholding the compassionate spirit of Tempe. Our homes are not just physical structures, they are the heart of our community. Let's ensure that they remain places of security, cleanliness, and pride. Thank you for your time and dedication to a well-being for Tempe's residents and neighborhoods.
Thank you so much. Really appreciate it. The next speaker I have is Benjamin Jeffrey. Please come forward, state your name and place of residence. You have three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members, and city manager, and et cetera. My name is Benjamin Jeffrey. I am the project manager for a Tempe nonprofit called Carry Me Productions Carry Forward Program. We tried to figure out how to get homeless people off the streets. I've worked alongside the HOPE team and the Department of Human Services in Tempe and the management for the last few years. I tend to do my own thing, and I also work for Aliyah Health Group, a national corporate addiction conglomerate. I oversee the state of Arizona, and I have 100 residential and detox treatment beds in Arizona that I can get anybody off the street to. I'm also going to be working this year on a veteran project, because I am a veteran, for Kerwin Brown with the Tanner Community Development Corporation from the ASU Morrison Institute. I'm going to be leading a homeless veteran project with 37 one-bedroom houses in South Phoenix. The intention of me standing here in front of you today is, as a former resident of the Tempe River Bottom and going through the hell that I have gone through to learn how to behave and stop screaming civil rights, and realize that it's a pragmatic problem that needs to have a pragmatic solution, that we are in a situation where we have the fastest-growing homeless problem in the United States of America in this region, and it knows no city bounds. I plan to work alongside with your invitation, with my phone number, with any city of Tempe personnel. I have the ability to get five to seven people off the streets every day through triage and diversion programs accessible to any treatment center in the state of Arizona. That being said, I look forward to working with the city of Tempe, CARE-7, the management, and the Human Services Department to absorb the problem so we don't have to continue to come here and say the same things. I plan on practicing triage, diversion, and pointing towards a coordinated entry system that you have in place until we can build the affordable housing necessary to make Tempe hometown for all. With that, I'll pass. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Next speaker I have is Kathy Gill. Please come forward, state your name and place of residence. You have three minutes.
Okay, this time I'll try to say peculiar better. Stuttering up here with you guys. All right, take two. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to share my concerns. I am Kathy Gill, residing on North Sunset Drive with my two daughters. I bought the house three years ago, and as a single mom, I was initially unaware of the extent of the drug usage in the seemingly charming neighborhood. Although the area appeared delightful, I soon discovered issues such as homelessness, excessive trash, and peculiar activities around my neighborhood. We love to walk around the community, but for my family's safety, we have stopped visiting the beautiful areas nearby such as the Tempe Women's Park and the Papago Park due to the presence of homeless individuals, litter, and unusual behavior. Recently, we observed an increase in human traffic and litter on weekends. When I discussed this with Lain and Paul, apparently individuals receive free food and then migrate into the neighborhood. This raises significant safety concerns for my family and the other families I have come to know and care about in my neighborhood. I thank you again for allowing me this opportunity and your attention to this matter.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. And the last card I have this evening is from Lain Caraway. Please come forward, state your name and place of residence. You have three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Lain Caraway. I reside at 1422 North Sunset Drive. I have lived at my current home for 25 years, and previously four and a half years looking for a home in this neighborhood, which was one block from the current neighborhood. I have seen a lot of changes through the years, some not for the best but mainly the good things. I have also been active with the city this whole time. Almost three years ago, Mayor Woods reached out, and at that time, city manager Rosa, to address our issues that were coming in our neighborhood. You guys didn't think twice about helping us, and you quickly came up with plans and implemented them swiftly. Since that time, our area has drastically improved thanks to your help. We know that we still have work to do, but our neighborhood wanted to thank both of you for your leadership and help in this situation. I have worked myself with homeless for many years. In fact, I was the first citizen to join the Tempe Coalition of Homeless. I have also established outreach programs for helping the homeless, including one at Tempe Beach Park, which Councilwoman Garland volunteered. So I do know something about this issue of homelessness. With that being said, I would like to ask Mayor Woods and fellow council members and the city managers to stop the feedings that are going on in neighborhood parks. This is bringing an influx of homeless and drug addicts back into our neighborhood. I'm going to read you a slight list of people that I had a chance to neighbors in my neighborhood: Carl Deanna Kriegling, Skylar, Sam McDuffie, DJ Mo Krugan, Adam Mallory Fleck, Dennis and Tony Lamb, Sherry and Scott Askey, Benny and Maria Munoz, BJ and Stacy Pasquale, Ryan Luther, Paige Shirley, Steve Iyote, Marge and Steve Forcheck, Georgia and Rick Kohler, Stephen Marshall Woods, Tino Hernandez, Sarah Retkin and her husband, Charlie and Beth Payne, their son Chris Payne, who owns the home too, Theo and Amy Peterson, John and Sarah Pharoah, Joe and Carla McCuffy, Kirk and his family of four adults, Nate and his family, Jolene Terrace, Dwight and Bree Peterson, Kristen and Mark DeCockis, Aaron Johnson, Bonnie and Eddie DeCock, Charlie and Marla Klein, Mary and Marcelo Ling, Ron Stasia and Josh Boyd, Cindy and Christie Lee, Austin Allison Snyder, Aldra and Jose Garcia, Diana Reyes and her two adult sons, Megan and Kobe Phillips, Erlene and Richard Delore, Georgie Hinron, Angus Pollard and his wife, Kathy Piper and Veronica Gill, Fritz and Michelle Beckert, Ray and Linda Case, Kevin and Melissa Hotberger, Colin Sip and Katie Allens, Susanna...
Ten more seconds.
Susanna, Mary and Bobby Lofton, Bill and Ramona Berger, Jean Ware and her two adult daughters, and Jennifer V. and her husband, 100 people counting Paul and myself that support you guys and what you've done in our community for helping make it safer, cleaning it up, our alleyways. We have individuals that will not use the alleyway at this point. They drive, put their garbage in their van, and take it around, but that has since changed. They do now open their back gate. So thank you guys very much for all your support.
Thank you, Mr. Caraway. Appreciate it. That ends all the cards that I have this evening. Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to address the council under item number two, Call to the Audience? If so, please get my attention. All right, seeing that, I'll close that portion of the meeting. Given that all of the comments were basically on item 3B, I'd like to see if we can move things around this evening, staff, city manager, and maybe take item 3B, which is the January 2024 Homeless Solutions update, then we will come back to item 3A afterwards.
No problem, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
You want to, Benjamin? All right. Good evening, mayor, members of the council. Want to start with the introductions. Tim Birch, Director of Community Health and Human Services. Sitting me today, side-sitting me today, is Jessica Wright, our manager over our Homeless Solutions work group, who will be leading the majority of this presentation because the fact of the matter is she does most of the work on a daily basis with her team, who is joining us here today. So I'd be remiss if I didn't recognize all the blue shirts in the lobby, I mean, in the crowd today as well. Our presentation is going to really focus on the work that's on a daily basis that works and drives toward the talking to you about the throughputs and outcomes of your investments toward addressing endling homelessness, which is priority 3.28, and community health and well-being, which is priority 3.34. I'm going to turn it over to Jessica, let her lead, and I'll provide color commentary kind of as we go through as well.
Thanks, Tim. And thank you for inviting us back again to provide some updates to you all. First, I want to talk a little bit about data trends. So what you see on the screen is the same data shown in two different ways. Over the past fiscal year, there have been indicators of a reduction in homelessness in the city of Tempe via two distinct data sources. Those data sources include both HMIS, our Homeless Management Information System, which is used regionally, as well as our city's point-in-time counts. So the number of unduplicated Tempeans served by navigation and/or case management reduced from fiscal year '21 to '22 from 1,861 individuals to 1,257, which is actually a 32.5% reduction. Our Tempe summer point-in-time counts from summer 2022 to summer 2023 reduced from 515 individuals to 355 individuals, which also aligns at 31.1% of a reduction. Finally, our number of chronically homeless individuals served in the city of Tempe between fiscal year '22 to fiscal year '23 reduced from 861 to 562, which was a 39.4% reduction. Just to give everybody a reminder of what chronic homelessness is defined as, it's really three things: a person who lives in a place not meant for human habitation, a safe haven or emergency shelter; two, has a disability; and three, has been homeless continuously for one year or four times in the last three years totaling a full year of homelessness. And MAGG reports from 2017 to 2023 that the number of chronically homeless people in Maricopa County has actually increased by 103%.
So what you're seeing in the results of the HOPE team outreach is that nationwide, the number of individuals on the street, they're staying on the streets, are getting sicker than ever, yet you've seen the decreases that you've seen here. Jessica will talk to you about some more national trends, but really, the overall picture for 2023 from HUD was that, as a nation, we have housed more people in any one single year than ever before in fighting this issue. At the same time, more new people entered into homelessness than ever before in any single one calendar year. So it really is an ongoing, it requires ongoing investment and strategy as well.
Yep, so to speak a little bit about national trends, first off, the United States Interagency Council on Homelessness, USICH, they identified in their December '22 strategic plan that they released, kind of some of the challenges that folks doing street outreach and people experiencing homelessness are facing. So they identified that there were 25% of folks experiencing homelessness that have a diagnosed mental health condition. That does not account for undiagnosed mental health conditions. And then also, 35% are reported to have a substance use dependency as well. So also, for the first time, you can see on the screen, since data collection has began on this topic, there are more folks experiencing unsheltered homelessness than sheltered homelessness than ever before in data collection history. So the USICH also identifies that many shelters are full or deny people who are struggling with mental health conditions, folks with substance dependency, have criminal records, live with a disability or chronic health condition, identify as LGBTQ, or folks that maybe have disabilities, pets, partners, older children. They just have fewer sheltering options together. And so, just to be clear, our city-operated shelters have eliminated all of these barriers for folks in accepting and utilizing our shelter space. So in addition, the National Alliance to End Homelessness reports, kind of expand on what Tim was saying, that in their State of Homelessness in the 2023 edition, that there's been a 7% increase in the number of shelter beds added to the shelter system... that there's been a seven percent increase in the number of shelter beds added to the shelter system nationally. Interestingly enough, in the last year, there's been a continued steady decline of six-point-nine percent of shelter acceptance by individuals experiencing homelessness.
Just saying another way, it is becoming increasingly challenging to engage, continually engaging meaningful ways and get individuals off the street. All the while, we see things like a near-record-setting amount of evictions happening in Maricopa in this past month.
So what are we doing in Tempe? The intent really is to provide you with an update of the current operating process for Hope, which was the original ask for this presentation. And again, what are we doing differently? I'll go ahead and share here that since August of twenty-twenty-two, we've had multiple adaptations to Hope Outreach, to our approach in sheltering and street outreach. We implemented the Care and Hope Line. We created an encampment reporting tool to provide and support our encampment verification and operations there. We updated Hope's operating hours to twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. And, you know, Hope is really currently generally responding to citizen-generated requests for service, both through all of those applications I mentioned, but also through the Hope@tempe.gov email address. So, in addition, Hope staff currently provide proactive outreach on Mill Avenue as well as at top-tier parks. So these parks have been identified as high needs through collaboration with our Office of Community Policing and our Tempe Police Department. And we're looking really forward to working closely with our park rangers as well in these efforts, too. So on average, Hope conducts between a hundred to a hundred-and-fifty engagements per week, resulting in over thirty percent of those individual engagements accepting services. Regularly, up to thirty percent of those services accepted include transitioning into a shelter, diversion from homelessness to a support system, or into their own direct housing opportunity. So the city's Bridge Shelter Program is currently transitioning to a two-city-owned Bridge Shelter Facility program. The city leased shelter contract for the Super Eight Bridge Shelter was completed on December thirty-first. And in preparation for that, our Community Health and Human Services Housing Division has been working to procure and taking steps to actively be able to negotiate the purchase of a second facility like Suze Espacio. So that would replace the leased Super Eight Bridge Shelter Facility. And to ensure continuity of services, Suze Espacio has been converted to be able to support dual occupancy of all rooms by adding things like locking storage cabinets, individual mini fridges, and things that were needed for dual occupancy. To enhance Hope's capacity for service, Mercy House was contracted and onboarded on October sixteenth of twenty-twenty-three to provide case management services in our city Bridge Shelter Programs. So what this did is allowed us to reallocate four Hope Team members from the city shelters that were providing case management back onto the street for street outreach to provide additional proactive street outreach as the goal.
And just to echo really quickly, when she mentions, when Jessica mentions top-tier parks, the parks that the individuals got up and spoke about during public comment, those are top-tier parks that is a part of our ongoing proactive outreach on a daily basis. And we are, just to echo, we're seeing the impacts that were reflected to you through public comment.
So to speak a little bit about the Hope Outreach engagement success, there's been significant success in individuals accepting services and housing with Hope. Since data collection methods were adapted with the Hope Engagement Application in April twenty-two, you'll see as the top portion of the screen, there's been a total of over sixteen thousand engagements, individual engagements with folks on the city streets in Tempe. Of those engagements, five thousand and thirty-three, or thirty-one-point-two percent, resulted in the acceptance of service that are steps towards housing. And of those five hundred and, or five thousand and thirty-three services accepted, one thousand two hundred and sixty-eight, or twenty-five percent approximately, of those services were either accepting shelter, reconnecting with a support system, or moving into their own housing. And so to speak a little bit on just this last month alone. In December of twenty-twenty-three, we had a total of three-hundred-and-forty-nine individual engagements in the, in the city between Hope Team members and individuals experiencing homelessness. Of those engagements, a hundred-and-thirty-four, or over thirty-eight percent, resulted in the acceptance of services or steps towards ending their housing, or, excuse me, ending their homelessness. Of those a hundred-and-thirty-four accepted services, forty-three, or over thirty percent, thirty-two percent of those services were either accepting shelter, reconnecting with a family member or friend that they could live with long-term, or moving directly into their own housing. So to kind of move on to how we're doing with the hiring process with the Hope Team, we have thirteen of the fifteen Hope Outreach Specialist positions that are currently filled or processing offers with Hope. In addition, in the past month, we've onboarded three new Hope Team members. We've got two candidates going through the HR process. So then I'll just jump into, you know, meanwhile, while we're currently in the hiring process, we're still utilizing Hope volunteers to go out with our Hope Team members in the community alongside staff. We're actively working with ASU for a unpaid internship program, but also for, to develop a paid internship program.
I just want to echo, I know Tempe takes a lot of pride in hiring really great people. We did have a gap and a lull in some employment there because some of our folks got poached by other organizations. That should be a testament to the type of throughput that we have here. But I really, again, want to give kudos and credence to the folks who are joining us. This team is made up of individuals with lived experience. So when we're talking about these issues, it's not hypothetical or philosophical to us. Many of us know what it is to be cold, to be hungry, and have been on the streets. I mean, we bring that into the work, so I just want to congratulate Jessica and her team for leading this team out in that way and making sure there's a space for the honest conversation.
Thank you, thank you. Also, to move on to talking about the twenty-twenty-four Point in Time Count, it's here already. The Point in Time Count is a homelessness street count, an annual street count and shelter count that happens nationally to identify really the extent of homelessness in cities throughout the country. So the city of Tempe and municipalities in Maricopa County are going to, of course, be participating in our annual Point in Time Count. It's coordinated through Maricopa Association of Governments and it's gonna be taking place on January twenty-third. Bright and early, as usual, we start at five-thirty in the morning. And thank you, Mayor, for being able to do the send-off for us again. On the screen, you can also see the lineup of what we've seen in the past few years of point in time unsheltered street counts as well. So as mentioned, staff partnered with Mercy House to transition all the Bridge Shelter residents from the Super Eight to Suze Espacio or to other housing resolutions prior to December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-three, when the contract sunsetted. So this transition is really an ideal example of collaboration between Homeless Solutions, Community Health and Human Services Housing Services, and Mercy House to really be able to provide greater support and services to folks experiencing homelessness in our community. So the goal is to continue support of our current average of successful transitions from shelter to next step of housing of eighty-seven percent of individuals moving out of shelter in the last year. And Hope is still remaining the entry point to the shelters as we've had in previous processes as well. So in other shelter collaboration, our city of Tempe renewed our agreement with Tempe Community Action Agency for the Step Into Housing Pilot. This program is designed to really make the most effective use of shelter space within our city to help individuals experiencing homelessness transition from TCAs' I Help Shelter into our city Bridge Shelter Programs as we work to resolve their homelessness. So in the first nine months of the pilot, twenty-two out of twenty-three individuals participating were housed successfully, and that was permanently housed, stably housed, not to another shelter. So we're happy with the ninety-five-point-seven percent success rate in that pilot program, and we're continuing it. So finally, Hope and Tempe Works have really worked to increase their partnerships with landlords. This includes housing solutions for shared living, senior living, transitional housing, and even weekly rentals that we utilize at times. So with regional collaboration, just to touch on what we do that we don't speak about too much, but we do a lot behind the scenes. Community Health and Human Services participates regionally in a multitude of different partnerships and efforts throughout our county. So we participate in initiatives led by MAG, including our local jurisdiction committee, our Continuum of Care Board, our Emergency Shelter Work Group Outreach Collaborative, Lived Experience Committee, Heat Relief. And in fact, I was elected by local cities to serve a two-year term as co-chair for MAG's Local Jurisdiction Committee. And our director, Tim Birch, was elected to the Continuum of Care Board to represent the East Valley. So in addition to the MAG-led efforts, we also participate in multiple inter-agency work groups and collaborative efforts, such as the Cities and Counties Coordination for Homelessness Meeting, the Homelessness to Housing Roundtable. And we participate as our city's representative for all regional case conferencing and coordinated entry for both signals and families. So a new evaluation tool for regional housing and shelter opportunities, the MAP Tool, is replacing the previously used SPADA tool that we've used for over ten years in, in our county. So Hope was actually one of the first regional work groups to volunteer to be trained in the MAP Tool. They took care of that at the end of December. And so this new evaluation is gonna prioritize individuals needing services based more higher, more highly on acuity and chronicity of homelessness when matching people specifically to housing programs that are available regionally and access through the coordinated entry system. So assessment and placement is based on acuity or really the myriad of complex co-occurring issues that is impacting housing stability to really have a goal of getting the right housing to the right people as quickly as possible. So chronicity looks really at the history of homelessness for individuals, while acuity looks at the barriers and to really obtaining and maintaining housing.
And just want to thank the council again for your foresight and, and, you know, putting this community health into Community Health and Human Services. That's allowed us to have also reoccurring meetings monthly with Maricopa Public Health, as well as City Phoenix and their public health coordinator. And as a result, I think you're gonna see things such as the conversation around heat relief, moving over into the public health space officially, and us begin to forge more strong reinforced relationships in that space with our local jurisdictions as well. So thank you for your foresight on that.
So in October of twenty-twenty-three, our city established the City of Tempe Homeless Outreach Collaborative. The purpose is to bring together nonprofit partnering agencies that do homeless outreach in our city and together with our city staff to really create and implement creative and collaborative processes in response to trends that we're seeing specifically within our city. On the screen, you could see the additional partners that we've got already currently involved and we've invited to participate. The collaborative is really a force multiplier towards increasing access to services for folks in our community, so.
Yeah, so making homeless briefer in one time is a team sport, yes, yes.
So to move a little bit on to Tempe Works, the Tempe Works program provides employment and housing opportunities for individuals experiencing homelessness to support them in a unique way on a path towards long-term self-sufficiency. So in August of twenty-twenty-three, we held our first Tempe Works graduation celebration at the Workforce Readiness and Livable Communities Council Meeting. Updates in Tempe Works include five new graduates in quarter one of fiscal year twenty-four. That brings the total number of graduates to twenty-four for the program. Tempe Works has developed new hiring partnerships, and these include Tempe Elementary School District for partnerships such as crossing guard, instructional assistance. And this past heat relief season, Tempe Works provided multiple staff members for Arizona Faith Network to work as staff members in our, one of the heat relief centers. So in addition, Tempe Works continues to partner with Maricopa County, Arizona at work to offer both career skills readiness classes and financial lunch and learn classes for individuals participating with the program.
It really is like being able to pour gasoline in our own engine of change by bringing, taking individuals, move them off the street into housing, and reemploy them in our own same systems and helping them move forward. Has been really great to see that life change. A lot of speaking points on this slide, a lot of them, I think, though you've already heard through public comment earlier this evening, so I won't stand on it too long. Other than to say, Tempe has a Healthy Giving program. You see the QR code and the web address right there, it's tempe.gov/healthygiving. It is a part of our real change, not spare change. What we really are asking folks to do is take that, that inner drive that you want to help and make a difference and help invest that one, two, or five-dollar handout you might give, that one sandwich you might give, and let that, I mean, the term force multiplier was used earlier. Let's all come together, give into organizations that you saw on that collaborative screen so that we can multiply that impact and get people off the streets into sustainable housing, meaningful employment, and really help them achieve something stronger, more permanent in their lives, so they can then as well come and give back. So we just ask that you, you take that opportunity. If you're not sure where to go, tempe.gov/healthygiving, or you can always email hope@tempe.gov, and we will create partnerships and link you up with folks in that space. So just want to thank you for your time. Jessica and I are here for any questions that you may have, and we're eager to answer them for you.
Sounds good, thank you very much, great presentation. I've got a whole list of council members. I'm gonna start here with Councilmember Keating and then Councilmember Hodge.
Thank you, I have a few questions. You mentioned that you remove the barrier of, like, homeless folks, of people experiencing homelessness, when they have pets with them, that they're able to take these pets now with them when they accept services. And I think that's absolutely fantastic.
Thank you.
My question is, a while back, you may remember, I know our city manager probably does, I ran into a gentleman outside of the gas station near my house who, who had a dog. And I talked to him, and I, you know, I kind of, eventually I explained who I was, gave him my card. And I was really trying to get him to accept services because he looked quite miserable there. And, you know, your heart just kind of broke for him. He was very concerned that he'd be separated from his dog should he accept services. And I reassured him, that's not the case. Look, I, you just saw me talk to the city manager, you know, when, I believe it was a gentleman by the name of Guillermo arrived on scene, I talked to Guillermo, too. We tried to do everything we could to reassure this gentleman know that you would not be separated from your animal should you accept services. And I was disappointed to hear that, it turns out, he didn't end up accepting those services. And he's still outside that gas station. I see him quite frequently, maybe two, three times a week. I buy a lot of Diet Cokes, as you guys know, it's no secret. So, and I spoke to him probably four or five days ago, and it was the same thing. He's like, no, I can't take my dog. So my question is, one, could you explain briefly, please, the, what the experience is for someone who is trying to bring an animal into a shelter situation or any sort of city housing? And two, if you don't already have it, can we produce some sort of literature that explains that to the individual that we're trying to give services to? Something like official, that it's not just a guy off the street saying, hey, I'm from the government and I'm here to help, and you can, you can keep your dog. But like something from, from staff that will say, this is what you will go through in the process to get you and your animal housed.
Absolutely, and we run into that quite a bit, where folks have that misconception. With our Bridge Shelter Program, we do have certain intake requirements. So one of those is that you're housing ready within thirty days. When folks are on the street, though, it doesn't eliminate the fact that our Hope Team can still work with connecting them with services for vaccinations, with services like Circle the City. We partner very closely with them to get emotional support letters for animals so that that way, whether they're accepting our services or not, their animal is getting housing ready in preparation of moving into any, any kind of housing unit or housing program. Because once they've got those things in place, which we also work with if folks are willing to accept shelter, which is why we can say also that our shelter will allow pets and not just service and emotional support animals. So there's all those pieces. And then I think that, you know, any kind of collateral that we can have to support our, our cause, always helpful.
Yeah, I think that'd be, I think that'd be fantastic because you see a lot of people experiencing homelessness with animals. And I certainly wouldn't be separated from my dog. So, yeah, I think that'd be fantastic, thank you.
Thank you.
I do want to give a quick shout-out, if you don't mind, to our Animal Welfare Unit as well, who has helped us, some of our homeless have gone in for medical care. They've provided respite care for that animal as well. So we really do try to keep that whole household served, yeah.
And I, right, I won't raise on my questions, but also, first, I have another question, but I also say, you guys are doing great work, you and your staff. You're obviously, by the statistics that we're seeing, you're making a positive difference in Tempe on a very difficult subject. So kudos to you and your teams, but now for my next question. Tempe Works, you mentioned there's been twenty-four graduates. So to define a graduate, tell me if I'm, if I'm not defining this correctly. This is an individual that, that came in, was given a city job, completed six months of that job, is now permanently housed and still employed?
So it's stable housing and ninety days of stable employment within either our city jobs or within our partnering positions with Corporate Job Bank or any of the other places that I mentioned.
Fantastic, so those are twenty-four people that graduate, have completed the program. So my question is, and I've asked this a couple of times before, and I, and I, we did get this answer not too long ago, maybe a year less, of how many total people have touched the program? And I remember, I think it was again at seventies, a number of people that have either started or, you know, maybe didn't show up or decided it wasn't for them or whatever. I would be interested to know what that number is today. So not, not just people that, that are the, you don't have to answer it now, right? But, well, it would be great if you can. And, and secondarily to that, we, as you mentioned, and as, as Ms. Foster mentioned, there is a lot of individuals that start in the program and then go to Corporate Job Bank or they go to some business that is partnering with DTA in the city of Tempe. I'd like that number, too, because that, that is still the city funneling people- I like that number too, because that is still the city funneling people into a self-sufficient path. So counting the graduates is fantastic, but really in my mind, anyone that is employed as a result from the City of Tempe is under some sort of permanent housing, whether that be a shelter or whatever it may be. I think those are numbers too that are worth talking about.
Absolutely. We've asked to start gathering employment numbers for folks that maybe haven't hit their 90 days but do move in and so that we can consider them as well within that graduate structure that we developed already. So that's something we're working towards.
Okay. Do you have any idea of the total number of people?
My Tempe Works coordinator is here and probably could answer that, but I don't know that off the top of my head.
Yeah, come on up.
Right. Like 24 out of 150.
Correct.
That number. Like showing a number like 24 out of 150.
Correct. 150, whoever, some people participate for a week, others do it much longer and end up being graduated. I want to know the number of total participants, if you have it, please.
So as far as individuals that have been referred to the program, so they've touched Tempe Works to some capacity to get prepared for employment, there've been about 380 since the beginning of the program. As far as the total number of participants that have been active, I don't have that number right now.
Okay. That's okay. I'm putting you on the spot. But the fact of the matter is 380 individuals have been given this opportunity over the last however many years, it's been now five.
Mm-hmm.
And I think that's fantastic. That's great. And that's what I wanted to know. Actually, I told the gentleman the other day that it was in its 70s. So 380 is a lot more. I don't know if this individual will give me credit for that, but no, I'm very, very happy to hear that and thank you for the work you do. But I would like to, at some point, get a number of X amount of individuals went to Corporate Job Bank, X amount of individuals went to a private business as partnering with DTA and with the City of Tempe, X amount of individuals started the program, dropped out, X amount of individuals completed the program. I think that'd be really interesting to see as far as what efforts and what we're doing, how effective it is.
Thank you. Councilmember Keating, just to introduce, this is Liliana Uranda. She's our Tempe Works coordinator. I apologize for not introducing first. And we are currently in the process of releasing the quarterly report that we can update with some of that data that you've requested for the Tempe Works program.
Yeah, that's fantastic. Again, great work. I really appreciate what you're doing and I know the residents do too. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, sure. Okay.
Just to follow, could it be something that we could see the same like spreadsheets when we get online and look at the homeless solution? Can it be on there also that we could just pull up and see those numbers at any time? Like we can see how many people in each week or each month have moved on?
Yeah, I think as a department, we've been working towards that overall. So yes, it's in the works.
I love that suggestion, Councilmembers. I think that'd be fantastic as well. Thank you.
Sounds good. All right. Thank you. Councilmember Hodge, then Vice Mayor Adams.
Thank you guys so much. Thank you, Rosa, for rust off because I asked for this like in December and you got it already in January. So thank you. My question is, my first is a comment. I want to say I can contest to what you guys do because I actually went out with you guys. And I will say that the relationships you build out there is phenomenal. It's not something that we can sit and read about or even listen to. You have to physically see it with your eyes to see how well you connect to the community that you serve.
Thank you.
And I will tell you that. It warmed my heart to see how well they knew them. They didn't just know their names. They knew everything about their lives. And that means the difference and that's why we are doing so well in what we're doing right now. So I just want to thank you guys so much. And I'll be back out. I told you guys, January, I'm back out in January with you guys.
Sounds good.
So I'll be back out there, but I just want to say that off the back. My second thing is, when we talk about, you know, getting them into work-ready and get them, how much education do we do and how much can we build like a partnership? So if they want to continue on and maybe we can work with Mesa Community College or Real Salada to even help them get beyond their high school or GED, get a degree or something on to keep continuing. Because I've learned one thing, the longer, the farther you go in education, the farther you tend to far away from the life you had before. So I just want to see, is there any kind of partnerships that the City of Tempe can do with farther in their education? And do we help them with their high school? I know, and I think we do with their high school and GED if they want it.
Councilmember Hodge, to that point, and it kind of piggybacks on what you're saying. I've recently had conversations with some in the building trades that have apprentice programs that said that they would take Tempe First, or excuse me, Tempe Works individuals. So that's something too that we can talk about offline, but I just wanted to piggyback on Councilmember Hodge's comment.
Yes. Absolutely. I think there's a couple of different pieces to that. I think that part of it is that we're expanding our Tempe Works availability of different employers to really accommodate a multitude of interests and skills and education levels for where folks are at right now. Because we know that our Bridge Shelter Programs are such short-term programs that folks are sometimes moving on from us pretty quickly. The other piece is, I think, making sure that we're working very closely with credible partners. So credible shelters that we know have good care and ongoing wraparound services and care for folks that we are transitioning to a longer-term shelter situation. On top of that, Lily and our Tempe Works program partners very closely with Maricopa County, Arizona at work for opportunities in education advancement. And then always open for additional opportunities, whether it's educational or workforce programs, internship programs, any of the above.
Well, I'm on the advisory board for Mesa Community College and I will be having that conversation with them about this.
Thank you.
To see what we can do to get some partnerships. And my last question is, beyond the shelter, we get them temporary services, are they on a certain level of like if they're on the Section 8 level, do they get any preferences or do we help with that? Or how do we connect that with our, with our, with our Section 8 and with Habitat of Humanity to get them into these? We want them stable and we want, you know, ownership, homeownership. So how do we handle that and put that together?
So I think that's kind of the unique art of what the HOPE team does and what Homeless Solutions is. We have to really speak and get to know each person to understand where their strengths are, what kind of evictions, any kind of criminal history, any kind of income strengths that they might have or barriers to be able to find housing solutions. So we work with a whole myriad of different housing solutions, whether it's our Section 8, our TBRA program through our Housing Department, which we already have a pathway set up for Tempe Works participants to get into that. We also work with, as again, we are the coordinated entry point for the City of Tempe, which means that we are the access point for all the folks that we encounter to regional housing programs. And so what we do is we work to connect folks with as many programs as possible and we can never have enough backup plans when it comes to working with folks and their homelessness and then allow for them to select really from all of those different opportunities what is going to be a best fit for themselves, their household or their family. Thank you.
Sounds good. Thank you so much. Next up, Vice Mayor Adams and Councilmember Garland.
Thank you. You have the percentage of the acceptance of services. Do you know how that compares to other cities?
I don't have that data, but that's actually a big discussion regionally of how can we standardize the information that we're all providing so that we're all providing something relevant to compare to others? So the only thing that I think is very comparable is point-in-time count information and data, but otherwise I don't have that.
Okay. All right. Thank you. That might be something to know about. Because my guess is that ours are higher than other cities because of what we're doing. Also, I know that you said that you guys are getting poached for people leaving. I'm just wondering if we've talked about any kind of program to try to keep our employees there? Like bonuses or whatever the case may be to try to not let them get stolen from us?
Yeah, absolutely. Vice Mayor Adams, city leadership very quickly had rolled out a pay compression process by which department heads can say, I am having difficulty or I'm losing staff because of this outside influence and I need some quick remediation on that. Our department, I believe, was one of the very first to take advantage of that. We did come in and level out the pay for that work group to make it as even as possible with our much larger competitors. And we, I think, have since stabilized and shown to staff the value of the work that they do.
Okay, good. That's great. I feel like this is the best program in the valley and maybe one of the best in the country. We are doing a lot to help and we're making a difference. So that's important for people to understand. As far as partnerships go, I would like to see you add Mulligan's Manor as one of the partners. And also EVA is a great program for training people. And so that might be a good partnership. I know we have ASU, but let's maybe reach out to EVA and try to get some, because they have so many different training programs there.
Thank you.
And I've referred a lot of people over the years there and it's been very helpful. So just something to put out there.
Tempe Union has its own program. You don't have to, you can go to EVA. So we have our own program like EVA.
Okay, okay, good. Well, there you go.
One thing I can also expand on that I forgot to mention before is that we did have Tempe Connect come in and talk with the HOPE team about how we can get overlap in the populations that we're serving. So that's another kind of digital education piece that we've connected the team to as well.
Okay. And I know that you divided the city into four quadrants. How is that working and making a difference? And my guess is it's really helpful, but just if you could explain that, that would be helpful for people that don't understand what we've done.
So since we've stood up, all of the tools that we've stood up since August of the previous year, we have really gone into a more responsive to citizen-generated requests for service. So individual-generated and citizen-generated, since we took the team and we spread them across 24 hours a day, we set up the Care and Hope Line. So right now with us being able to have Mercy House in our shelters and pull four additional HOPE team members back out onto the street outreach, we're really hoping to really direct more back to that proactive outreach with the zones and the four quadrants.
Very good. Yes, because as you know, the more they get to know and trust people, the more likely they are to accept services. So that's really important to point out to folks that don't understand how that works.
Yes.
Also, I want to thank Councilmember Keating for his leadership on the Tempe Works program. That's impressive. Over 300 people that have been touched. And a lot of times, just that one touch turns the direction of that person's life. So we're literally saving lives by having these programs. And I'm so proud to be part of the council that is approving these programs and hiring. You guys are incredible. And hiring, what a great team. I see you out there in your blue shirts. I'm not forgetting you. And I just, it makes me so happy and so proud to be a Tempe council member. Keep up the great work.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Appreciate it. Next up, we're going to go to Councilmember Garland and then Councilmember DeVaro.
You guys are like on the firing line. But you can see how passionate we are, all of us are, about what you do and so proud of the work that you have done. So thank you so much. So I have a few questions. So one is, how can we work with or how are we working with our constables as far as the eviction notices that are going out? I mean, I know that the best thing that we could do as a community is to make sure people are not being evicted. So I know that we've got programs set up there. I always think we need more money and more services there to be able to help with that. But how are we working with our constables?
So we work very closely with our constables. And actually, they were one of the graphics that, I know there was a lot of them, on our City of Tempe Outreach Collaborative Group. So we invited them to participate. That way, as we're talking about outreach efforts throughout our city and how we can improve and partner with all of these organizations that have the same goal, they would be a part of that as well. And so we've included them so that way we can very much be just very in close contact about any kind of evictions that are happening or trends that they're seeing as well.
Okay. I have a dear sweet friend, her name is Angie, and she has a house called the Golden Girls House. And it's a house of hers and she has four very senior women who stay in her house and she works through TCAA. And I wish more people were doing that, but it's so dang cute. The fact that she calls it the Golden Girls House, I just absolutely love. So how does somebody become a HOPE team volunteer?
Just email your information to hope@tempe.gov. Could be just as simple as your name and phone number and we'll reach back out and get you connected with exactly how to fill out the paperwork and what we need.
Okay, perfect. And talking about the zones, I was going to ask a question about the zone specifically. When we do get those set back up and we get those people back in there, it'd be great if we could work with Neighborhood Services to reach out to the neighborhood leaders and introduce them to that HOPE team member that's there so that they can start building a relationship in the community. I think that might be helpful.
That's a great recommendation.
And then the other one is, I'm glad you said something about heat relief. That was on my notes to ask when we're going to start turning that up and how are we going to be working on that coming up?
So today was the Regional Heat Relief Launch Meeting. So we were participating in that and getting started on a regional level. And then on a local level, we've already established a meeting time this month for us to work with partnering departments on what we noticed as needs and trends from this last year's experience.
Okay. And that Care and Hope Line number is on my direct dial or my speed dial because I do call a lot. I absolutely appreciate when they ask if I want to call back and they really do call me back and then tell me what, you know, the outcome was from that. The sad thing for me is the majority of the time they call, they say the person does not want to accept services. So I know that there's a whole other thing, we need to be working on that, but I just really respect so much what your team does and that they are there anytime I have ever called and I call a lot. So just thank you so much. And then are you still accepting volunteers for point-in-time count?
I actually just hit my maximum number of volunteers fully.
You did. Okay, congratulations.
Although I'm willing to absolutely take a waitlist and I let folks that'll go to that QR code where they could sign up know in response that if they wanted to just email me directly, I'm going to keep a waitlist for openings as they come available when folks inevitably aren't able to make it that day.
Okay, great. All right. Well, I'll see you then.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sounds good. All right. Thank you, Councilmember Garland. And one quick shout out to Councilmember Garland before I go to Councilmember DeVaro. I know she's always at the point-in-time count and I know she always brings breakfast for the entire group of people that are actually coming out to volunteer. Many times that's upwards of 70, 80 people, so she's always supplying breakfast. So I wanted to make sure to shout her out for those efforts and making sure that folks are well-fed before going out there for a day of doing the point-in-time count. So just thank you for that as well. Councilmember DeVaro, then Councilmember Chin.
First, thank you guys for the presentation and obviously the information is great for us to understand and also for our community to understand what we're doing and what we're trying to achieve. And granted, it's a lot of, it's a hard animal. We totally get that. But we also totally understand that staffing you, supporting you helps public safety. It helps fire, it helps PD. From eventually someone getting to a phase where they do other things or getting to the health phase where they are in a situation that, you know, fire is involved and all these other entities. So it is important that we do help out, we do fund, we do find resources to make these things happen, to continue what you guys are doing. The connection of services that you guys are doing, I know on a regional level, we just had a meeting today, I chaired the MAG committee for human services and community initiatives. And, you know, just the fact today, we had a community cares with Contexture. And basically, it's the county working together with all the cities, just trying to look at all the services that are being offered by this group and seeing if other cities will take part of these services. And the data that they're collecting and finding out the gaps of what other resources need to be part of the solution. I think we need to be part of it. If we're not, it's something very strategic that on a regional level, it really shares that information, not only just on services that are provided, but also on health informations on individual people. So you have count and track and accountability and you actually have the ability to maybe get individuals more specific help, not only just the homelessness, but other entities that might affect their lives to get them services as a doctor or caseworker and all these other things that go along with it. So I think that's great. It's been inundated week with, you know, just this topic. You know, we talk about housing. I was just at a meeting and a councilmember, Adams, yesterday morning. and Councilmember Adams yesterday morning, or was it this morning? Oh, thanks, because I'm, days are going by. But, you know, you talk about affordability and people losing their homes. And then they become homelessness and, and they're, you know, living out of the car, whatever it may be. And there's so many factors that go along to the, to why we're at and where we're at and how it's building and building and building. So with all that said, I'm just trying to say that, thank you. Thank you for continuing the services. A question, when we talk about our HOPE team and the transition, what is the average stay of an individual staying within? I, I do understand it's a lot of capacity for an individual to keep on with his career. How often, how long do we keep an individual? And what do we have to kind of look at in terms of transition to get more people involved?
So are we, are you asking about the HOPE team or Tempe Works?
Well, just HOPE team caseworker, to maintain a caseworker, to, to continue here and stay here. Because, because what you just said was you build rapport, I think Councilmember Hodge says. And that, and when I was working in the, you know, operations and fire at Station 3, and that was it. I had rapport with the homeless people, you know, I knew where they came from. I had, you know, information why they're this way. And that, and I know that the HOPE team individual gets that information. You want to retain that talent. How do we retain it? And how long do we have to often kind of change out, I guess, because we might lose somebody?
Well, we've been adjusting as needed as we've had openings come up, come up. But I will say that we focused very heavily on creating a training calendar that provides us some robust training opportunities for the team, partnering training opportunities for the team. I know we just did another round of first aid CPR. We did motivational interviewing, trauma awareness, regular ongoing trainings like HMS and those kinds of things. And then opening it up to the team to find out what they want to be learning about as well.
So, and that's what I'm trying to get at is, is, is what are, is it the hours of work to retain a someone? Is it the pay to retain somebody? Do we have an idea what might help?
I, I think you'll see that when we looked across the city, talking about recruitment and retention, really, the rate for community health and human services and getting into this unit was, was no higher than some of the other larger departments in the city. So I don't want you to think that it, we're an outlier in that space. Jess does a great job of listening to her team and making that investment. But it's always going to be difficult to ramp someone on for that graveyard overnight weekend shift. That's just where you're going to get the most burn and churn. And that's the place where we get into trying to listen to our staff to say, what is it we can do to, to, to make this better for you all?
And not to mention, we just got through the summer where it is harder to hire for street outreach at 115 degrees. So that is a part of it that we have to just honor.
What are we doing for advertisement? We talked about, you know, don't give change, give, make change type of scenario. What, what, what can the city do to get that information out? And other cities have used signs, you know, just kind of, hey, here's the number to call. I mean, are those programs that we see benefit from, from the other cities? I mean, because we obviously see it on, on the highways, you know, and people are giving change. But it's like, hey, you want to make change, you know, give it to the people that are trying to make change. They get to the individuals that are trying to get them home. What, what can we do?
Yeah. So we've worked with our PIO office. I know that there are signs posted on some of the roads coming in and out of Tempe around Real Change, Not Spare Change, because of also the life safety issue of people standing in the medium and high, high, high traffic areas. But we have digital signage in the downtown area as well. I think maybe those signs, the number of those signs has depleted over the years. But we certainly we've worked with our PIO office to talk about how do we continue to get this message out. I mean, it is something that our affiliate, TCC, Tempe Community Council, continues to push. And their Healthy Giving initiatives as well, they're a very strong partner in that. And we use them to lean in on those partnerships and the messaging. So I don't know if we have specific activities that we're doing other than working with Suzie and Chris and her team to make sure we get that out.
I don't think I have anything additional past that, except for if you go to tempe.gov backslash Healthy Giving, you can see a running total of where it's at currently with Healthy Giving.
Regional data collection, collection. I know, let's, let's get on that. I know you guys were saying, hey, we need that information. I think that's good. I think MAG would be a great place for that resource to work with what they're doing on a regional level to share that information. I think that's highly strategic. You just talked about unsafe right away or, you know, asking for money within, you know, in the middle of the street, so to speak. I don't know if this is another thing with PD, DPS, or whoever it is. I noticed down here on Rule and the 202, you know, the median right in the middle is separate. It's not, I mean, it's this small and just walking across. I don't know if that's a public works things to make the design a little bit different to where that is not a possibility for someone to stand on that median. Just things for the city to think about. I don't know whose ownership it is, DPS or us, to try to, you know, often patrol that area to get people from out of there. That's just not for you guys, but just for the city involved. And then Tempe Works, obviously, Randy, I mean, that, that thing, I've seen that thing in success from day one and the start of that. And, and it's just, it's tremendous. And those are small steps, and I appreciate that. And then I'm going to finish out with the, the questions we had today. And this is, this is more on a, if it's a future thing than it is, just what are we going to do with the neighborhoods to protect the neighborhoods? I mean, obviously, there is good, you know, with what people are trying to do for homelessness. But at the same time, it's infringing on neighborhoods also. And we, I think, as a city, we, as a region, we need to kind of really plot out the best places where we could address those services. And I don't know if those are discussions for you. And then I'll, I'll bring this up at a later moment after this meeting on, on looking into it. But I think that regionally, we need to figure out the onus of where strategically we can place things, you know, to do those services out there. And I think that's just a question here for later. So first, thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Chin?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to echo, thank you also for a great presentation. Obviously, you got all of our attention and our interest and our questions. Some feedback. I agree with Vice Mayor Adams about being curious, but also informed about regional and national statistics and in comparison, not as competition, but just as a benchmark, so we know. And I turn to my council colleagues and the mayor, something Councilmember Navarro just said, echoing that. And I turn to our team, how do we help the staff? Because you sit on different national and regional MAG and League of Cities committees, let's help them get, get some standardized practices and get that conversation going. So make sure you let us know what you need in that, in that arena. You mentioned a statistic, and I'll use one of them. You had some great numbers to look at, which, thank you, city manager, the data-informed decisions. It was, when that slide popped up, I thought, this is why we do that. So we know when we're making other decisions, like about non-discrimination with housing vouchers and other funding issues, we know then that something is working. So the efficacy rate, and that's what I'll call it, that 38.4% of people accepting services or shelter in the month of December alone seemed high to me. And, and I think, I think we all suspect the same thing. That doesn't just happen, that you walk up to somebody and say, hey, can I offer? That's the work of the individuals, the investment in time. That's what struck me, as that was the work of the team to build that trust so that, and the credibility with our unsheltered population to say, oh, yeah, they're offering me something real. And I need that. So thank you. Thank you for doing that. Tempe Works, I love how we as a city, as a community, and the team is working with other departments and leveraging our resources together. And that as a community and city council, we're investing in that to help, to really, to make real change. This is a big topic, and I feel like we're chipping away, which that's, right, these are the inchstones. They're not milestones. They're inchstones for us. I really appreciate that. And I echo what the Vice Mayor said. Proud to work with you. Proud to be on your team. So thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Hodge?
I have one more thing. While I was out, I noticed that as our team, they give socks, they give, they give. You want to ask Councilmember Chin what we can do? We can give donations because they give donations and they run out very fast. They, they do socks. You guys do, what else? I don't know if you do deodorants, you do a food bag when you get it, because a certain organization does it once or twice a week or something. We can do more. We can add into that because they were giving sandwiches and apples and oranges. And they were begging, those people were sitting there eating it at that moment. So what we, one of the things we can do easily is to help with that donation. So I want you to tell us a little more what we can do.
Thank you. I think that's always relevant for us to be able to use it as a conversation starter with the folks that we're encountering on the street. And we're not talking about large items. We're talking about some basic things that we can use just to open up the dialogue and be able to take a moment to introduce ourselves. So occasionally, we have non-perishable snack items to be able to give out. Water and liquids are always a huge piece for us because there's so much of the year is hot, that that in itself is a really big piece for us. Socks, yes, we actually have a local district currently doing a sock drive for us as well. Those are, those are very useful things. And then sometimes the travel hygiene items as well. Those are, what I'd say, we take out with us on outreach. In addition to all of our outreach cards and the things that we can make sure that people have the information on how to reconsider and reach back out to us, how to get back with us.
And just one item to piggyback on there, something from a public health standpoint and a human dignity standpoint, feminine hygiene products are very important and something not easily accessible to women living on the streets. So we're always going to look out for those types of things as well.
How do we get it to you? So would it be easier if we had like a box donation in city halls in different areas? What, what would be the best thing for us to do to help you with this?
We're open to all ideas. That works for us. We are working 24 hours a day. We can come by anytime to come grab the items and connect with you all. Or we're at the library where things can be dropped off easily at our front service counter on the second floor. There's, there's an elevator to get up there. So it shouldn't be easy for us to connect. You can always just email hope@tempe.gov once there is some items that we can coordinate with you on.
What I'll do, I do a breakfast with Burdette every month. I'll make sure I have a whole box at every month for donations to be put in there. Thank you.
Sounds good. Thank you. Vice Mayor Adams?
Yes, just quickly, I just want to remind everyone that it is citrus season. And a lot of us have more citrus than we need. So shout out to the community to take your grapefruit and lemons and oranges or whatever the case may be and drop them off.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sounds good. Well, everyone said pretty much everything I was going to say. The only last thing I wanted to add before we close out is just thank you again for all of your hard work and the entire team for your work. This was, you know, we do a community survey in the City of Tempe every year from the ETC Institute. We've been doing it 20, for 26 years with the same group. And I know this was the top priority in that survey from our residents and many of our business owners that they wanted to see addressed by the city council and by city staff. And so being able to show them actual data and show the results and the progress we're making is extremely encouraging and really is a testament to the work that you're doing. But it just shows how responsive the entire city government is, frankly, to the needs of what our residents and our business owners have said that they would like to have done. So I just wanted to make sure to point that out. This was the number one priority. And we are clearly all collectively working on it and making that problem better in a humane way. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Great job. Thanks.
All right. Next up here, item 3A, All Pedestrian Phase at Mill Avenue and Fifth Street.
Well, that's a tough act to follow. There's some amazing work going on out there, you guys.
I thought you were going to say that, Kathy.
So we're here to talk about one of our intersections here, the All Pedestrian Phase at Mill Avenue and Fifth Street. This, oh, what am I doing here? Oh, this one? Okay, sorry. This project aligns with Council Priority 3.26, the 20-minute city which focuses on non-odorized movements. So this project provides an enhancement to our existing system to kind of make the area a little bit more friendly. For downtown, it was something new and exciting, prevents a kind of, presents a unique activity and actually made some people smile and actually made crossing the street maybe a little bit more fun than it was before. So, you know, we put it forth and it's actually generating a little bit more interest in advance of our Mill Avenue Refresh Project that's coming up. So real quickly, just to recap, council asked that we try a pilot project for this. We did this, put this in place in March of last year. To the following month, we collected data, got public input and did some observations, came back to you all in June. And at that time, you asked that we continue the pilot project for another six months. So here we are back with you today. Ellie Velosen and Lieutenant Hayes are going to present their evaluations. And at the end of the presentation, we'll be asking for council direction on how to proceed.
Great. Thank you very much. A little short. Great. So in this presentation, we'll just talk a little bit about what was previously presented on this project and the changes that were made since June. The current operations, we'll get some perspectives from the PD and responses from other stakeholders, and then we'll look at next steps. So in June, we came to you to present the operations that we had observed at the intersection of Mill and Fifth. We saw an operational analysis model we did before. The implementation showed that we should expect some increased delays for both vehicles and pedestrians. We did observe queue lengths at, back in March to be the highest in the PM peak. In the southbound direction, they reached to about the Hayden Ferry Building during a typical PM peak travel time. In the northbound direction, they reached to about 9th Street. We also observed some instances of non-compliance from all modes of travel, pedestrians, bicyclists, vehicle drivers. And the travel time between University and Rio Solado was looked at as well. And we did see a consistent slight increase during most work, weekdays. We also did a public survey. So we asked a lot of different questions on that public survey, but just as a sort of summary of that, we asked, what type of intersection would you prefer? So on this slide, everything in that orange color is they would prefer the All Pedestrian Phase. In that blue color is they prefer standard phasing. For overall responses, we saw about 57% said they preferred the All Pedestrian Phasing. And of course, that looks a little bit different as you break it down by different populations. So when we came to you in June, we, as Kathy mentioned, the council requested we continue the pilot for six months with some changes to be made immediately. So since then, we were asked to enhance the all-way crossing pavement marking to make it a little more obvious that this is an all-way crossing, that you can go diagonal. So Isaac's team was able to install some thermoplastic white tape as a temporary solution to make that diagonal crossing a little more obvious. We also were asked to take the intersection off of pedestrian recall. And if we'll remember, that means that at a lot of intersections in the downtown area, the pedestrian phase, the walk signal comes on whether there's a pedestrian present or not. It's all, every single cycle, it's on recall. We were asked to take that off recall. So that now has push buttons at every intersection. You do need to push the button in order to get your pedestrian phase. And we also installed some new signage. If you remember, at the time, we were using some kind of large plastic yard-type signs on the poles as a temporary solution. And so we have some more permanent, the traditional metal signage that shows the all-way cross. So we are looking at operations currently. So this was taken from November. And what we're looking at is in the green color on the top chart is November 2022. On the orange color is November 2023. And that's northbound on the top chart. The bottom is southbound. So on the bottom, 2022 is in dark blue, 2023 is in light blue. So just overall, what we're seeing now compared to last year around the same time is very little difference in the travel time between Rio Solado and University. And in many cases, it actually has decreased, likely because the number of vehicles going down Mill Avenue has changed. People have diverted their trip to other roadways for probably a number of reasons. We did some observations at that intersection. About 15% of all the crossings we see there are using the diagonal. There is still some instances of non-compliance from everybody. We see vehicles making a right turn on red. That has decreased since March. Pedestrians that are crossing outside of a pedestrian phase, that has also decreased since March, although it is still happening. Bicyclists who are going through the intersection during the pedestrian phase has not decreased. So that is an opportunity for us to give some more education to our bicycle community about how we would prefer them to use that intersection. So I'll hand it over to Lieutenant Hayes to talk about the PD perspective.
Yeah, thank you for having us. The, from a PD perspective, we haven't noticed any significant safety or pedestrian issues at the crosswalk as opposed to the previous design. The only things that we've noticed is the congestion has gotten better. It's only down to about 7th Street now that it's pretty consistently congested out of about 7th Street. They are still making right turns on red, which they're not supposed to there. But it hasn't really caused a tremendous significant safety issue at this point. But we could probably improve on that. And we are noticed that pedestrians are, are crossing with the green and red. Or when it turns green, they will cross instead of looking at the walk, don't walk sign. So I think that's something we've been trying to work with. We're going to probably remedy that, too.
Okay. DTA was kind enough to do a survey for us of some of the businesses right on that corner. So they asked seven of the businesses right near the 5th and Mill intersection corner, what their comments are. And there were a lot of different comments about how it was kind of fun to watch. It was a fun thing to have. They liked it. But kind of overwhelmingly, all of them said that if it was up to them, they would vote to keep the All Pedestrian Phasing. We also went to our Transportation Commission this past Tuesday to let them know what was going on at this intersection, give an update. And outside of commission meeting time, several of them did approach us. Four of them specifically said that they, they do like the All Pedestrian Phase. So that's not official commission statement, but individual commission members. So moving forward, we're asking for council's feedback on a direction for this intersection. Option A would be to maintain the permanent pedestrian phase. This would include modifying the striping again to make it even more obvious that this is a crosswalk. And if it's permanent, we can use some more permanent means to do that. Installing audible push buttons. Installing audible push buttons at all the corners. So those give an audible indication when the all pedestrian phase is on. The permanent signage that's out there, we think can be made larger, a bit more obvious, a bit more visible. And then we will also be developing some additional signal timing plans that we can use for some flexibility in signal timing when there's an event or any kind of situation that requires outside of normal operations. Option B would be to revert back to the standard phasing. We are, we still have maintained the previous signal controller that was used before that. So we can easily just pop that right back in. Not a long time there. We can remove that diagonal striping because it is temporary tape, but again, would be very quick. We can remove the no right on red signage and allow right on red turns again at that intersection and just remove the all head signage.
That's what we got for you tonight. And we're looking for direction on how you'd like us to proceed.
Wonderful. Sounds good. Thank you so much. I'm gonna start with Councilmember Hodge and then go to Councilmember Keating.
Okay. I love the, I love it, the pedestrian crossing. So I'm automatically gonna say I want to go with option A so that me and Councilmember Garland could do another monkey dance down the way what Councilmember Chin will not do with us. But I'm, on my part, I'm 100% behind it. Thank you.
Sounds good. Thank you. Councilmember Keating.
Councilmember Chin, you wouldn't catch me dancing in the street either, so it's fine. When we last heard this, was it September or March, excuse me? Whenever we last heard it, I'm sorry. It sounded like there was more concern from PD than there is today. So is it that people's behaviors are changing and it's not as big of a concern as far as a public safety? From a public safety standpoint?
I think there's a cultural change that happens anytime there's a change that's made, right? I think they've made some changes already. And so that kind of smoothed out. People started learning what that was all about. The only issue we're having now is I was talking to some of the bike guys today and at different times that some people like it so much that they want to do it at like Sixth Street Mill, right? And they think that's, so that's some of the things. So, but that's very few and far between. But I think there's a cultural change that has happened and probably smoothed out quite a bit.
Okay. Well, that's very good to hear. Initially, when this was brought back the first time, I was concerned about the public safety aspect of it. But it sounds like things have improved. They're gonna continue to improve. So I'm all for keeping it the way it is. I think it seems to be working, so if anything broke, thanks.
Sounds good. Thank you so much. Councilmember Garland and Councilmember Navarro.
I use it quite often and I absolutely love it. Quick way to get to Starbucks. Even for me, as often as I have used it, I still take that first couple steps. It's like, is anybody else doing this? Okay, I'm gonna go. So I think better striping on there to make it more noticeable to go across it because that, the brick that has the markings on it is very, it's a little confusing. And I know that's not a part of it, but I think it's wonderful. I'd love it. I'd like to see it on more streets. I really enjoy it. Thank you.
Sounds good. Thank you so much. Councilmember Navarro?
Yeah, I agree. Option A, keep it there, enhance it, do it. I think also, as you were pointing, Seventh Street is gonna be a logical place to do it because of the amount of pedestrians coming in from the hotels and also the street with all the apartments and things like that. I think that might serve a better solution. Maybe the other streets, keep as is, to be honest with you. And then, yeah, just enhance it, make it best. I've seen this done in other college towns and it works very well. So it's not like we're admitting something new.
Sounds good. Thank you. Anyone else? Councilmember Chin?
Thank you, Mayor. I agree with Councilmember Keating. Initially, in June, I wanted to see what the public safety concerns were. I'm glad to hear that there are no increased concerns. I think it brings something novel to the area and it draws attention to the area. And I think it only enhances that area. So I am in support of option A.
Sounds good. Thank you. Vice Mayor Adams?
I also am supportive of option A.
And I'm supportive of option A as well. So wonderful. I guess that is as clear a direction as you could possibly get. But, but thank you again. This is great and just looking forward to some of the new enhanced signage you're talking about.
Great. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Next up, item 3C, sober living task force update. Tim, long time no see.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. I will keep this to the point. I'm here to talk to you about the sober living crisis task force and provide you an update. The purpose here is not just to speak, but to also get your feedback and some guidance on recommending next steps and seek your input on that. This, of course, is a higher priority issue touching several of the, from feelings of safety in neighborhood down to community health and wellbeing for city priorities. While this issue is in the spotlight recently, this did not pop up overnight. This, there's a longtime festering fraud system that has been first noticed in 2019 when tribal leaders began to identify that sober living providers were taking individuals, sometimes in unmarked vans from as far away as New Mexico reservations. We've met people from Idaho who have been brought into this valley, who don't know the city, who have been all but sequestered and kept from their families in these sober living facilities. To give you a understanding of the pace of growth of this issue, Goodyear PD back in 2020 said they had two identified homes. They estimate there may be as many as 150 operating in their jurisdiction this year. So it is a rapidly metastasizing issue. And we're thankful that in June, that you had the foresight with city leadership to have us begin to meet as multiple city departments to talk about this issue. We brought Solari in who began to brief us about their initiative and efforts through the 211. And I'll say this several times, if anyone you know or if you are listening and you're impacted by this issue, don't know how to receive help, call 211 from any landline or cell phone in Arizona. Press option seven and they will link you to the services you need. We have gone through a series of meetings. We've actually met monthly and talked as a task force and began to scope out this issue. We're thankful also to the Attorney General's Office for giving us updated data. To date, we know that over 400-plus Arizona healthcare cause containment system providers have been suspended or terminated for fraudulently billing. That may be, we've seen people billing up to 23 hours a day for services fraudulently. What we also know is that we as a community, once in a response to this issue being brought forth and the media began to report to Solari through 211 as well, an additional 168 providers have been identified through that process. This is impacting over 6,200 individuals. What we have learned, what started off as targeting tribal members, over 50% of those 6,000 individuals are no longer tribal affiliated. What they, these providers have done, again, constantly shifting their business model is we're gonna take people off of the streets, have them fraudulently declare they are part of a tribal nation and enroll in benefits and begin to fraudulently bill on their behalf as well. Which, when that individual then finally does interact with our Hope Team member and wanted to get off the streets and get treatment, they may have burned all of their Medicaid benefits because of that fraudulent process. It really does impact the care we're trying to provide to our citizens. And what we know about what could be $650 million of fraud in this last fiscal year alone could end up, over the lifespan of this investigation, show upwards of $2 billion of money that was taken out of the healthcare system for the state of Arizona. And we are grateful for the partnerships with Tempe Police as well, who are partnering with the AG and the FBI's office. And we know there have been some prosecutions as of late. And we hope that some of that restitution goes back into addressing this problem. The shape of the problem, there's two primary modes of operation. In a lot of jurisdictions, you'll see a lot of homes being purchased or leased in residential areas and providers popping up. White vans in the driveway taking people to and from these homes to an outpatient treatment clinic. And then you have all of those issues and concerns happening there in those neighborhoods reported by neighbors. And then you have the model where you have outpatient treatment providers leasing blocks of rooms or working with hotel operators with kickbacks, which has been more prevalent for us in the city of Tempe. Well-known and highlighted through local news media at the Ramada Inn in North Tempe, where over 200 individuals were staying and being taken advantage of through that process. Treatment and housing are not typically located together, which if they were, we could get in through our code enforcement, our existing codes and rectify that. But they make it hard and their business models shift as quickly as we begin to nail them down. What we do want to tell our neighbors, if you begin to see vans moving groups of people in and out of your neighborhood on intervals, you see individuals isolated without things to do, sitting around, this is a place where you might just want to call 211 and report that address and let individuals begin to investigate that because we know that has led to several of these homes being discovered. Sober living task force really kicked off with a few goals in mind, making sure that we are clear with communication up and down at all levels of local and state government, as well as across all of our city departments. We had coordinated responses, looking to identify and how do we report these? How do we investigate? And how do we help support enforcement initiatives and efforts? As well as identifying gaps and solutions and making some recommendations, which we are here today to do. We reached these recommendations by meeting monthly, working through several work groups, one of which was Community Partners. First of all, I thank Councilmember Navarro, Councilmember Garland, and Councilmember Hodge for being at many of these task force meetings. Councilperson Hodge, thank you for getting to school district. All of our, all of the local homeless Title I coordinators have been addressed and included in conversations around this issue. And we are looking forward to make those, these recommendations to you. We did something unique that I just want to highlight very quickly, and that is we brought in emergency management. So thank you to Tempe Fire Medical Rescue for taking a non-traditional approach and working with us to say, this is a crisis, this is an emergency. What would happen if we applied emergency management discovery principles to this? And we walked to the issue in a half-day workshop and came to these recommendations for you. One is creation of a general business license. We got there through listening to the city of surprise that was able to reduce by over 90% the number of illegal operators in their jurisdiction through the use of a general business license. Because when they went out and investigated at home, if they were operating fraudulently, most likely didn't have a business license and they were able to shut them down. It also ties into some pending bill drafts. And I'll talk to you a little bit about that under the, under that piece as well. Systemic tracking the problematic properties. We've talked to other jurisdictions throughout the valley. And those that have had the most success have a electronic system or a way for code, fire, you know, police department, community health and human services, other like agencies to begin to identify something's not right at this address. And while we may not sustain the investigation through code enforcement, we keep hearing about this address. And if you collect those complaints on a consistent basis, you could step back and see a quickly emerging trend and it might lead you to other interventions. So looking at how we can stand up some sort of investment across the city to allow us to begin to pool that information and talk about it collectively. One of the things we did learn about in this process was, again, if organizations are licensed to do business and they're a commercial entity, what we saw specifically at our hotels that were operating in this fashion, an excessive amounts of calls for service, 2, 3X times a like business model operating in a repetitive manner. So looking at an ordinance by way of, much along the way of, I think, the keys, pieces of the vaping ordinance, where we first lead with education, PD could then lean in and help build a safety plan, what keeps making these calls for service rise and rise and rise. And then if there's not participation in that, how can we then use enforcement methodologies and perhaps fines to then come in and help rectify that situation? That obviously takes a lot of exploration. And so what we're again looking for on these three items is not an okay and a vote to do these things with, just at a bullet to level, but to create, have this task for spinoff with subgroups to explore these more deeply and come back to you if that's something that you would desire for us to do. And as well, never forget in the communication and keep the messaging out there. See something, say something. If you're being harmed, 211, option seven. If you're not sure how to get help, we always have our Hope and Care line and those calls come into us on a daily basis. We also would like to recommend supporting the Arizona Department of Health Services. They've done a really good job and a really great partner of stepping back and looking honestly at their system and saying, these are our loopholes that are codified in law. We need these changed in the upcoming session. Part of that is, right now, if you begin an investigation on someone, they can simply transfer the ownership of their partner, property to, or their business to another partner and that stops the investigation. So they can just reboot this amongst their group multiple times, you know, hopefully that loophole gets closed. Also, inspections are only done, had been done once a year, typically at the end of the first year of operations, moving that initial inspection into the first 30 days of operations. And then rather than waiting 24 months to do your second inspection, keeping those up annually is a part of the recertifying, relicensing part. Secondarily, fines. The limits for fines are codified in Arizona state statute. They're limited to $500 per instance. That is not dissuading these providers that are billing for tens of thousands of dollars per person almost on a daily basis. So looking at upping those fines, requiring those fines being paid before AZ DHS reissues a license. Right now, those fines can roll from year to year to year. So we're hoping that we can see some change on that. Sober living homes are not accessible to be known by the community, behavioral health or burfs. You can look up and see those in your neighborhood. Sober living homes, that information is shielded. We're asking for the same confidentiality to be waived on that. So folks that outside law enforcement can know where these sober living homes are operating. And then increased operating oversight infrastructure. Some of these services that go into getting these businesses licensed and monitored are still manual at the state level. So hoping that there can be some, knowing that with budgets the way they are, they're not gonna get a staff, so they probably need, so create the efficiency of some technology that also lets us partner better in with them as well. So those are, that is the fruits of the very hard work of multiple departments across the city over the last six months and your involvement as well. So open for any questions? Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Sounds good. Vice Mayor Adams, then Councilmember Garland and Councilmember Hodge.
Yes, thank you for this great presentation. Very informative. I'm particularly interested in the Ramada Inn. Darlene Justice and Kim Caffey and Burdetta, Councilmember Hodge and myself went out and we actually entered the Ramada Inn, Councilmember Hodge and myself. And it was, it didn't go well. They really didn't want to see us. And you could tell like someone was really suspicious. And there were the white vans, you know, out in front, unmarked. And so we immediately, and then they had armed guards. And so they really tried to intimidate us, which it didn't work. But they tried, A for effort. And I'm just wondering where we are with the Ramada Inn at this point.
What I'll say is this, I won't speak on behalf of Tempe PD, but I know that Commander Hill and the AG's office and that whole stack is in close communication. Prosecute, we don't want to do anything that would jeopardize investigations or prosecutions. So that's about the extent of what I can say at this moment.
Okay. As long as you're on it, which it sounds like you are. Thank you. And thank you to the PD also for your help on that.
Sounds good. Thank you. Councilmember Garland?
I just want to kind of start at the beginning and just say it's because of our security guards caring about the community that at the library, one of the security guards, and I'm so sorry that I do not remember his name, contacted Joseph Littleboll, who's a security here at the city hall, and told him about what he had seen and thought it was kind of off-seeing a Native American, I think it was a Navajo Nation license plate. And Littleboll told me, I went and ran to their city manager. And within a week, we had a BIA agent here and had you come into that meeting. And that was, that started, but it started so quickly. You guys took it over and did exactly what we needed to do to try to protect these people in the community. And I just, I wanted to make sure that we gave a shout out to our security guards who were paying attention and brought that to us that we recognized then that this was actually happening in the city of Tempe. I also want to thank the city of surprise because if it wasn't for them bringing their presentation here and doing the majority of the legwork, we didn't have to recreate the wheel. We really took a lot of what they were doing and enhanced it and have done other things. So I just want to make sure I say that. And Senator Hattatalli from the Navajo Nation, she is still trying to fight that fight at the state level. And I, I want to do whatever we can to support, the city can support her and other cities can support her to make sure that we get something moved forward. And at the governor's State of the State breakfast that we went to, the city manager and I and our chief of staff, that's one of the things the governor said, is she is gonna work really hard to stop those loopholes to protect the, these vulnerable people that are, end up in these fraudulent sober living homes. So I just want to say, you guys are absolutely amazing what you have pulled together in a short amount of time and all the task force meetings that you had and Burdetta bringing in education. And I think we got the real estate organizations in there also because they're boots on the ground too. They see things all the time. So just thank you so much for what you're doing. I completely support those four initiatives. Absolutely, we need to be working on an ordinance because we're not gonna be able to stop it unless we do something. So I think it's, will be really helpful for us to start exploring what those ordinances would look like. So I support all four of those.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Hodge?
All I want to say is thank you for everything that you've done. Thank the Tempe Police. Thank for everybody who's been a part of this from the beginning. And I support all initiatives and anything that we need to do to make sure that we keep our community safe and our people and our city safe. Thank you.
Sounds good. Thank you. Councilmember Chin?
Thank you, Mayor. I just had a couple of questions about the recommendations. The first one makes sense on the requirement for a business license. If you want to operate in Tempe, we should know about it. And that seems like a no-brainer. I wanted clarification on the item three, on the excessive calls for service and increasing fines, similar to the loud party ordinance, right? I think that was in the, in the notes we had. to the loud party ordinance, right? I think that was in the, in the notes we had. Um, to whom would the fines be assessed?
Yeah, so, um, what we've looked at, and certainly haven't gotten to the level of conversation, would get down to that level of operation. We did not wanna get ahead of your guidance, um, but the city of Anchorage, Alaska, um, has a very similar ordinance, ordinance. Um, and I wanna thank Chief McCoy for bringing that to the table, letting us know that this has worked in other jurisdictions, um, in, in a way that did not, uh, freeze out people from calling for help. Um, this is, uh, specific in germane to commercial properties, um, that do not continue to address the, their ongoing issues and, and creating those calls for services, and pulls, you know, critical resources away from other, uh, things. So the, the fines, how they're assessed, that will certainly be things that we will bring back to that group and say, okay, these are the questions that the council wants you to answer as you sculpt this ordinance draft, and we'll bring that back through the whole process and the presentation and learning for you all as well.
I, I appreciate that. I got ahead of it a little bit. Um, I'm supportive of it. What I may recommend, I should have been more direct in my, in my suggestion, is, um, let's make sure that the owners of the commercial or residential properties are assessed the fines, because if they're leasing it, renting it, it'll get the attention of the owners, is my recommendation. But I'm supportive.
Thank you. We'll take that back to the work group. Thank you.
Sounds good. Thank you. Uh, Councilor Keating?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I'll keep this brief. I support your recommendations, and I do think Councilmember Pritchard's recommendation, take a look at that. I think that, that makes a lot of sense too. So, good work. And, uh, you have, you have my, my support, my consensus. Thank you.
Sounds good. Thank you. Councilor Navarro?
Thank you, Mayor. Same as him and her.
All right. And I'm good as well. So I think, oh, Councilor McGarland?
The, the security guard at the library is Michael Bedea. So thank you so much, Michael.
Thank you, Michael. And thank you, Shawna Warner as well from Intergov, who's actually helping work some legislation, uh, dialogue through, and has been a part of one of those meetings. Did not wanna overlook her and her efforts as well. Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Sounds good. All right. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Okay, next item on the agenda is call to the audience for committee for the whole items. There are no items ready for city council direction or status update this evening, so I will close this item and move to the next. That brings us to item five, well, actually, five A, which is nothing. Uh, but then item five B, which is council committees in progress updates is needed. Uh, Vice Mayor Adams?
Yes, I just wanna remind everyone that our next meeting for sustainability and economic vitality will be Friday, February ninth at 1:00 PM in council chambers. Looking to seeing you all there.
Sounds good. Thank you so much. Any updates on five B? Councilor McGarland?
We have a Human Services and Community Safety Committee meeting, and it will be on, uh, Wednesday, the twenty-first. That's myself and February, sorry. Thank you very much. It's myself and, uh, Councilmember Navarro. Thank you.
Sounds good. Thank you. Anything on item five B three? Councilor Keating?
Well, Councilmember Hodge usually announces our next meeting, but she said she had, she had to go. Uh, we have our, um, workforce readiness, Louisville Communities Committee meeting on January twenty-ninth at 3:00 PM in council chambers. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you so much. That brings us to item number six, future agenda items. Members of the council may request that an agenda item be added to a future issue review session, but in accordance with the open meeting law, there should be no discussion on the item other than to clarify the request. Councilmember Navarro?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, just a, I know that, uh, we have staff looking at the ADUs and, um, those resources, but just a, an also agent in place type of issue of, and in ADA issues. I know a lot of the homes that were built here in Tempe's sixties, seventies, um, smaller hall, hallways, things like that. Uh, looking at solutions to, um, help, um, people, especially people with fixed incomes, to try to expand, or people that cannot get services from insurance companies or, uh, other entities, they're just kinda in that gap of having to fund it themselves. So it's, it's looking at what the city can do in providing resources to help lower down construction costs or work with, uh, entities that could help do, um, uh, some modifications to residents. I, a, a, a long time ago, we, I, we did a HIT program. Um, and one of the things that came out of that was, we know the plans of continental homes, SUGS homes, and all these things. So with that said, if there was like simple modifications to make, uh, adjustments in those homes, and the plans can be shared, simply shared, it's not like, like grandiose, um, modifications, but there might be something that can, uh, lessen the cost and the burden for residents to make those modifications and to make those adjustments. I don't think this is a, a big scope of work, but I think it's a, it's a potential to, um, make, uh, simple modifications that at a, at a convenient or at a reasonable price, and then work with entities that might be able to volunteer those construction costs or lower those costs, or just the supplies for that construction. So, um, I can talk more about that offline, uh, to kinda get what I'm talking about, maybe, and, uh, just something to look into, similar to the HIT program.
Sounds good. Madam City Manager?
Mayor, uh, Councilmember Navarro, we'd be happy to bring that back.
And, and then just another, um, i- if we have to re-engage on the conversation we heard from residents today, um, about, uh, feeding homeless or, uh, those services, are, are, are we holding people accountable to get permits? Um, is that working? Is the locations, they are getting permits, but yet it's still, you know, uh, causing issues within those neighborhoods. Um, kind of a twofold, how are we doing? And the second fold is, are we looking at better locations? Is there, is there locations that we could say, you know what, if you're gonna do those things, here are probably some better locations? And it might not be just City of Tempe, it might be those borders between Mason, Phoenix, and Tempe, but, um, just, I, I think it's something to explore.
Mayor, Councilmember Navarro, we were actually on a call today with the city of Phoenix. Uh, so Deputy City Manager Greg Reese and the team, the entire team, has been exploring this, um, for a couple of months now, as far as what are other cities doing, and really taken a very thoughtful, compassionate approach on, you heard tonight, the issue itself. So we'd be happy, once we identify specifics, come back to the mayor and council and share that.
Sounds good. Thank you. Councilor McGarland?
So Clarence, real quick, am I allowed to add to, uh, Councilmember Navarro's question about adding ADUs? Can I?
Yes, Councilmember, you can, you can, uh, add to that or talk about it if you want.
To, to City Manager? So at the National League of Cities, the last conference we were at, there was actually a meeting that was discussing, one of the things was ADUs. And there are a number of cities that provide, they have three, two to three plans, um, of, uh, ADU designs already. And they, that, they call that fast-tracking. They fast-track it through so somebody can come in and those plans are already approved and set. Uh, I, I wrote down the name of the cities that had those. I don't know if that'll help, but I'll be more than happy to share that information with you. That's a great recommendation. And then I do have one more. Uh, Councilmember Hodge and I went and visited, uh, a neighborhood and walked with a neighbor, um, to look at some abandoned homes in her community, in her neighborhood, um, that had been boarded up. And I just got an email that actually the fencing that went up around one of them that was very dangerous came down. But she took us to a number of them, and there's a spreadsheet that we were looking at. So I was wondering if our staff can do a presentation on, um, what do we do with abandoned homes? Or what is considered an abandoned home between what can the city do? Because I looked at it as a, and Councilmember Hodge did too, as a community safety issue with having those homes empty. There's a burnt-out house that hasn't had anything done to it. And property rights, what's the, the, what it, what can a resident do for their property rights, you know, versus, um, um, the property rights of the owner, but the property values of the neighbors? So something along those lines would be really helpful. So I guess I don't know how to answer those questions. I'd like to know.
Mayor, Councilmember Garland, um, actually Director Jeff Tammy Levich and Ryan have been discussing this. We know that community member Antilla had brought forward those concerns. It's something the Code Compliance Office has been working on for quite some time. We'd be happy to bring you an update on our code and what's going on. Thank you.
Sounds good. Thank you. Any other council members, any other future agenda items? Okay, seeing that, I'll close that portion and move to item number seven, announcements for the mayor and/or city manager. I just have one announcement this evening, uh, just regarding the 2023 annual report for our City of Tempe Boards and Commissions. So each year, the city's boards and commissions are responsible for preparing and submitting an annual report to the mayor and city council. The annual report details the membership, accomplishments, goals, attendance, and the overall work of our boards and commissions. The eighth annual 2023 Boards and Commissions annual report will be published in the city council weekly information packet and on the Boards and Commissions webpage tomorrow, Friday, January twelfth. So on behalf of the entire city council, I wanna thank the two hundred and sixty-eight Tempe residents and community members who serve on the city's twenty-eight boards and commissions. We are grateful to have engaged individuals willing to take time away from their own busy lives and family and friends to make a difference in the city that we all know and love. So thank you to each and every one of you who serve all two hundred and sixty-eight on the city's twenty-eight boards and commissions. With that said, that ends my announcements. Madam City Manager, any announcements?
One brief one, Mr. Mayor. And Eddie's gonna run a video. And I just wanted to thank Officer Craig Bear. Um, this is actually video that Jennifer Johnson, resident Jennifer Johnson, shared with me regarding a husky at our, Lost Our Home, uh, nonprofit pet rescue in Tempe. So the alarm went off, police was called. Officer Craig Bear responds without and he proceeds to greet the dog without getting very frustrated that there's an alarm going off and realizing that he's the culprit. So the dog, his name is King, I believe. It's a husky. He escapes his kennel, enjoys some food, and tries to dash out of the building. And then you see the amusing sequence that Eddie's building up. But what's important here, and I know it's very amusing, and, and in fact, it hit national news today. I think it was on CNN this morning. Uh, we often talk about our city values. There are seven of them. Many of us know them very well. And I think it's important, especially to end this council meeting, hopefully, on reminding ourselves the importance of catching people doing really good things in our community. And what are this, what are the values of this? Is the integrity, one of the seven values is integrity, and that officer shows integrity. It's, integrity is defined by what you do when people are not watching. And that tells you everything. So thank you for the opportunity to share. Thank you to Officer Craig Bear. And I know he didn't want this probably, um, but thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to share.
Thank you, Madam City Manager. Councilwoman Keating?
Thank you, City Manager. Um, yeah, so I had not heard about this until today. I saw it on Instagram, on the We Rate Dogs account, which is like a national account. And I see, like, the captions, like, Lost Our Home. I'm like, wait a minute, that's, that's Tempe. So that was really cool to see. And I don't know if you saw that part of the video, but what was really great about it is when the dog got out, it tried to break out its doggy friends. It's like, it's like, hey, we're having a party here. Um, couldn't figure it out, but, I mean, that's really cute. And thank you to the officer for taking care of that so well. And, yeah, that's just a great video. So thank you for sharing that with us.
Sounds good. Thank you. All right. Anyone else? All right. Wonderful. Thank you, Madam City Manager. Thank you, Councilwoman Keating. That brings us to item number eight, which is adjournment. Our next regular scheduled work-study session is on January twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four. We are adjourned. Have a good evening.